Thank you councillors, please be seated. Welcome councillors to the Redcar in Cleveland Borough Council for Thursday the 16th of February 2023. Could I ask all to switch off their mobile phones or place them on silence please? Our first item on the agenda is apologies for absence and I've received apologies from councillor Abrock, B Clark, councillor Hickson, councillor C Holmes, councillor El Holmes, councillor Quartermaine, C Craig and, sorry not Craig, Carl and Lee Quartermaine, and councillor Jones, Lax Keeler and Griffiths. Do we have any other apologies?
Councillors Brooke and Clark.
Thank you councillor Brown. Okay, thank you. Item two is to receive declarations of interests. There should be declarations of interest forms on your table and if you have any, please submit them on the form. Item three is to confirm the accuracy of the minutes of the meeting held on the 12th of January 2022. Can someone formally approve them please?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Second, thank you councillor Kay. Item four is to note the attendance matrix. Noted. Item five is to receive any announcements from the mayor, the leader of the council or cabinet members. And I warn, could I remind councillors they need to have their nominations in for the mayor's community achievement awards, hopefully by today. So if you have not already done so, please could you get them to Jane Holmes as soon as possible? I was disappointed to hear from Jane this morning that we've only received ten nominations from five wards and two of those wards, each member has submitted a nomination. Councillors, this is the opportunity for you to thank the people who work, volunteer in your wards, either a group or an individual. So please, let's get some more nominations in. Thank you. Councillor Lanigan.
Mr Mayor. You'll be all aware of the significant funding that was secured for Gisborough. I want to take this opportunity to thank our staff who worked extremely hard on both bids that we actually had there and it was an awful lot of effort. I'm sure you're aware councillors that I was down in London and while I was down there I went to see Michael Gove to see if I could secure any further funding for Redcar in Cleveland. The meeting was quite positive. However, I've got to tell you that we have heard nothing from Michael Gove's office to date. So we'll wait to see what happens. I understand that there's some problems with one, some of the ministers' offices and the treasury have stepped in. That's the only information that I've got at the moment. I do want to absolutely reassure you and you'll have seen in the cabinet papers, financial papers, Eston Baths is going ahead. Funding is in place. Eston Precinct, we haven't got the money for that at this moment in time. But Eston Baths is definitely going forward. Last month we saw the launch of our new children's social work academy. The academy offers newly qualified social workers the best start in their careers through support and of course guidance, which will lead them to becoming highly skilled. The new approach will allow our council to develop our social workers of the future and help address a national shortage of experienced staff. We've already got three new recruits who are progressing very well and I look forward to many more of them coming and joining their ranks. Families across our borough will be, receive extra support after our children and family staff were successful in securing funding for our family hubs. The additional funding will improve the range and availability of services. A new Start For Life offer is also being developed, which will provide parents with a guide about what to expect through the first thousand days of a child's life. At time, I know you're all aware that that's where that development takes place. It was heartening to see the reopening of the library and community hub at Ormsby. Last month and it's well worth a visit and it is, it's a place to be much admired. The interior's been redesigned to create a new place for people to meet, learn, play and we hope residents, businesses and community groups will, will go in there and enjoy that. Now we, we would like residents' views on our library provisions and I know that you've had an email out but it's about the whole of its future. We would like to know how users would like to see our services developed and for those who do not currently use the libraries, what would encourage them to do so. But I've spoken to the cabinet member this morning and this is across the board, our library provision and I understand that that's going out so that we, you can all help as much as you can. And it was lovely to see our young people from across the borough coming up with some great names for our new street sweepers. Now you'll see them like we've got Sweepy Jean, we've got Trusty Dusty and Orlando Broom, keeping our borough clean. Freebra, I'm sure that you've seen announced in the paper, they got outstanding in Ofsted and that is absolutely amazing for the East Cleveland children that we've got there. T's Flex Bus, we seem to have a lot of things on social media about this. I've been in touch with the mayor yesterday because the T's Flex Bus should have come off next week. I understand that, and they can't do that because there isn't a meeting until the 14th of March with the combined authority leaders to make that decision. But as yet, unless I've had an email since eleven o'clock, the T's mayor hasn't got anything in place to extend it beyond next week. But what they're trying to do is make sure that happens. We can't have a break in service where we are, so that's critical. From my point of view, I would be voting to keep the T's Flex. The East Cleveland area and some of our outlying areas there desperately rely on that going forward. So we've got to make sure that we've got cover. Our transport system is appalling in some of our areas with the Reeper buses not even turning up when they're supposed to be turning up. And it's okay for Stockton and Middlesbrough, they've got buses coming through every few minutes. Redcar in Cleveland area, some of them are quite isolated. So I'll make sure that we fight our corner when I go to the combined authority. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Do we have any announcements from cabinet members? Okay, thank you. Item six is to receive any announcements for the managing director. John, do you have any announcements for us today?
Mr Mayor, it's just a reminder for members of next week's series of special budget meetings that we have. So on Monday the 20th at ten o'clock, we have a resources scrutiny, we'll look at the budgets. On Thursday the 23rd, also at ten o'clock, we have a cabinet meeting which will consider the budget proposals and recommend to council and then later on on Thursday at two o'clock, we have the special council meeting itself. The council meeting will have a single focus on the budget proposals for twenty-three, twenty-four with none of the usual procedural agenda aspects we are having here today. The debate on the budget will result in a named vote having to be taken for and from all eligible councillors in attendance. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, John. With item agenda seven, we have no questions from the public. So moving on to agenda item number eight, to receive reports from portfolio holders. This afternoon we're going to receive the report for the cabinet member for corporate resources from councillor Glynn Nightingale.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I think it should be pretty well recognised that without the nuts and bolts of the, at work of the resources director, the vital achievements embodied in the corporate plan would not be possible. Finance, HR, governance, IT, communications and property management are what the council's vital frontline services rely upon for their effectiveness, efficiency and for smooth running. Like all local councils, Redcar in Cleveland has faced many unprecedented difficulties in recent years and I'm going to make no excuse for repeating them. The economic bequests of the Covid pandemic, Trusonomics, Putin's war in Ukraine are three of the major aspects affecting the council. All councils have had to respond to the government's determination to shift the burden of taxation onto council taxpayers. Sixty percent of the revenue budget of this council is now financed by council tax. In the early 2000s, it was around sixteen percent. So this has added the long-term loss of government funding, the need to make efficiency savings and avoid cost increases over the past decade. And this is to maintain essential services. And this now totals a hundred million pounds. Secondly, pressures from the necessity to address the needs of vulnerable children and adults now takes up somewhere around about fifty-five percent of the revenue budget. Thirdly, inflationary pressures that we face that we've not seen in forty years. Despite these challenges, we must have a balanced budget and maintain our determination to keep the council's share of council tax well below inflation as well as below the majority of local councils and the level expected by the government. Next, I need to highlight the wide range of crucial work of the resources directorate. Despite the unprecedented difficulties that I've just mentioned, there have been considerable achievements in our determination to implement the corporate plan. The financial team has been responsible for making sure the money is there for the implementation of a whole range of activities. Major capital investment projects such as the one mentioned by, by the leader in Homes of a Library and also in Redcar, at Gisborough and Loftus. Along with the rationalisation of council buildings, the new equality and diversity framework and budget updates and end of year accounts. The HR and governance service has made important progress supporting young people with thirty-one apprenticeships, seventy-two taking up on the Kickstart scheme, fifteen paid work experience places, training in mental health awareness, recognition of brilliant colleagues' contributions and upskilling staff through the management development programme and the launch of the Member Case Management System. The new committee management system will soon be going live. The communications team has made sure staff are kept up to date and the, and the council magazine, Facebook page and the vastly improved website as well as basic publications like leaflets have ensured that residents are aware of the help that's available from the council and the extensive services the council provides. The IT team has successfully responded to the challenges through the new secure internet gateway and Microsoft SafeLinks and the requirements of members and staff. It has also wheeled out the impressive new telephony arrangements for internal staff communication. The directorate has not only been involved in the corporate peer challenge, investigating the results of the 2021 consensus and planning contingencies through its business continuity team, but its financial support team have helped the residents affected by the cost of living crisis, the pandemic and soaring inflation. So finally, Mr Mayor, I must thank all the resources directorate staff for their essential work over the past few difficult years. Especially many like cleaners, accountants and lawyers who were often unseen working behind the scenes. I am delighted how responsive staff have been to help achieve our corporate priorities, how resilient they have been throughout the unprecedented challenges we have faced as a council and how they have reinforced my belief that local government can not just survive its immense pressures but remain as the, one of the crucial features of a liberal democracy.
Thank you councillor Nightingale. Any questions in relation to that report? Can I just remind councillors that there is a set amount of time set aside for question and answers, which is normally ten minutes or longer at my discretion? And please councillors, can the questions be succinct and relate directly to matters within councillor Nightingale's report? And we have councillor Eyre.
Under two point six, what type of apprenticeships are we talking about? Are we talking along the lines of, of the former youth opportunity or the YTS? Or are we taking the apprenticeships within the parameters of the NVQs? Thank you Chair.
I think this is the answer to that question, but these are modern apprenticeships that are implemented throughout the council's activities. And of course, we should always compliment the fact that we are doing this. I'll make sure you get a proper answer to that question.
Thank you councillor Eyre. Councillor Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am disappointed to read this. There's a lot of information in here that we've done, we've done, we've done. But as I read it, we can... As I read it, we came in with a deficit and we leave with a deficit. It's the same as, same as. We leave all the gaps in our budget to fees and charges.
Councillor Watts, question please on the report. Well, can you come to it please?
Council tax and savings. What I would like to know is what new initiatives you have done in the preceding four years in drawing this up?
Councillor Nightingale.
I think that question because the council must have a balanced budget. There has been a deficit on both the council tax and business rates over several years. And a considerable amount of that deficit has been caused by the pandemic. The council had a three-year grant from the government that it was allowed to use to ensure that the deficit on the collection fund was actually covered. So I'm quite sure that the cases that, I think you should, you should be mentioning some cases in, in particular about what, what particular aspects of the deficit she's concerned with. Quite often of course, people do move, they do die and they do cause us to have uncollected debt. But I can assure you that no debt goes unchallenged and undisputed and unchased.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Watts for your question. Councillor Massey.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Thanks councillor Nightingale. I think obviously you've got a very difficult task here in the sense that the budget is coming next week. But I can recall, and it'd be remiss of me not to mention, that I was criticised by yourself for a similar report which didn't have sufficient financial detailing in your view. But I do take the point that in a week's time we'll have a lot of that financial detail. I guess my, my question is around the issue of council tax. So you mentioned the fact that local authorities in this country, due to a decision by the national government, are increasingly having to raise income revenue from the council taxpayer of the borough. And I think my question is therefore, to what extent are you concerned about this? And it seems like quite a push, particularly with council tax being quite a regressive and out of state system. It seems like the central government are trying to push the burden of local government finance onto our local taxpayers. And I know that we do good work as a council to try and mitigate the impact of that, but given our own cuts, it's very difficult to do so. Are you concerned about the increasing use of council tax effectively to make up local government budgets is the question.
I think we've got consensus on that. I am concerned. I've never supported council tax. I don't believe that you should have a tax that's based on what some estate agent thinks is the value of your house. I think taxes should be based on the ability to pay. And I think there may be mitigation of course in terms of the household support fund and the benefits that are actually introduced to mitigate the impact on lower income people. But it doesn't get away from the fact that this government has been trying progressively to shift the burden from its own tax collections to the collection of the council. I, I did notice that the Member of Parliament for South Middlesbrough and East Cleveland said that this was, the expectation that the council should put up council tax by five percent was a progressive solution to the issues involved. Now, I think anybody would actually support the idea that local, local government and local democracy would actually be on a better state, state standing if there's more tax raised locally. But that would have to be in my view through a local income tax that's based on the ability to pay. And then again, in, in the case of a business rate, eighty percent of the businesses in our borough don't pay business rates. But it doesn't mean to say that some of those who don't pay are not actually profitable. So if we had a tax that was based on ability to pay, I think we could perhaps all support the idea of, of more money coming from local taxation, provided that the services such as those for vulnerable services that are involved in the adult services and the children's services are given sufficient grants to ensure that we can ensure that those people who are in need do get the proper help and benefits that we can provide. But in answer to your question, obviously, you can't help but be concerned, can you?
Thank you. Councillor Brown.
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. Can, can we also say that same MP said, no, such a budget better, just in the context of the conversation we have here? It is with quite a lot of sympathy from this side that, that you guys have had to manage the circumstances you have over the last four years. However, let's not take away from the fact that residents are seeing over the last three or four years one of the highest increases in council tax in their history. So just to move on a little bit from Chris Massey said and a little bit to your defence really. The cyber attack for instance cost the council around about eleven point three million pounds, I believe, which the government give you grant of around three million. Can you just tell, tell the council how that eight million has impacted this budget today? And also just a secondary question, what are the level, levels of reserves that when you took office to what they are now?
I think I'm going to have to give you a more detailed answer in writing on that one. The, the cyber attack clearly was a major development in, in what was going on in the council's activities. One of the things we should recognise as well, and I think this should be made more public, was that the National Cyber Centre and GCXQ were all involved. And they did say that the council's systems were, as they should be, in terms of being prepared for this sort of thing. But you can never be prepared for this and several other businesses and authorities have been involved in this. I actually appeared on Radio Television Aaron about the health service in Ireland that was attacked. Now in terms of, in terms of the money the government gave, I don't think you're ever going to get all the money you're going to get, you, you won't from the government for these things. But I, I'll certainly find the information for you and make sure that you, you have the right answer to the question. On the matter of reserves, the reserves that we inherited, if you remember, had nearly nine million pounds taken out in order to balance the budget in 2019. It was a difficult period for us in terms of dealing with the reserve issues and we've overcome some of that. Obviously since then, all the difficulties I mentioned earlier on have impacted on the way in which the council budget is being performed and therefore we, we had to take some money from the, from, from the reserves to ensure that we do balance the budget. But I'll, we'll go into more detail I'm sure next week on, on some of these issues and I'll make sure that you've got the information that you require.
Thank you councillor Brown for your question. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got three questions. The first one relates to corporate plan. Solberg Valley Gardens has been on the at-risk register now for several years. There is no prospect of that being removed with the current council proposal. And part of the rationale there is that we have not devoted enough resources and looked at our structure to be able to address some of the major issues. So my first question is, will the portfolio holder revisit what is being done to address the at-risk situation of the Valley Gardens in Toulpe? My second question relates to governance service. Members will be aware that I have been continually asking for a, an improved performance in our annual assessments of staff. And I've recently submitted a pro forma that I think may be helpful in that. And I know that the legal system are looking and they are going to adapt our current review pro forma. But even with that, our performance levels are so dreadfully poor, particularly in some departments. So I would ask, Mr Mayor, if we can revisit how we are monitoring our appraisal performance delivery and do what we can to redouble our efforts to achieve much better performance levels. And my third question relates to financial services. At the moment we've got capital and revenue and we're reporting on that and how we're having to delay or not deliver. But in the process, what we are failing to do is to have proper business plans for some of the projects that are so important for delivering our policies and our services. So wherever I look, for example, on the foreshore in Toulpe, where I was asked to produce a business plan to substantiate the appointment of a foreshore manager, none of the facilities.
Councillor Thompson, I've been more than generous with your time. Will you just get to your question please?
None of the facilities have business plans associated with them. So there is no revenue being allocated that has been received against capital and maintenance. So I've asked, Mr Mayor, if we can revisit how we manage our finances within the council.
I think in terms of reviewing every single policy that's implemented by the council, a revisit is always welcome. So I can, I think I can give you the answers in the affirmative there. On, on the, on the business plans, I, I was under the impression that all projects before they were ever included in the, in the capital budget had to go through a rigorous business plan process. So if you've got any instances where this hasn't taken place, I'd be very grateful for you to let us know. I think it's an important factor in, in whether we actually go ahead with any investment project in the council. Clearly, we are laying out money. There's a risk that the benefits that we expect from the investment project are not necessarily going to be coming to fruition. And it's essential that we have not only a proper business plan before that, but we also have project management that is effectively ensuring that the money that the public is expecting us to spend is spent in the proper way.
Before I call councillor Sue Jeffrey, we have no more. Before I call councillor Sue Jeffrey, we have no more councillors requesting questions, so I will draw the line after councillor Sue Jeffrey. Councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks for the report councillor Nightingale. And I, like you, am very impressed by our finance team, corporate services team at the council, they do an excellent job, and I think we'll see that again when we have the discussion on the budget next week. But my question's about business rates. Business rates, we did specifically say, following on from the peer review, that we would recruit an officer specifically to look at securing the best possible benefit from particularly the business rates arising from the Tees Works investment. And if you look at the recent Freeport business plan, you'll see that they're talking about three point one million pounds worth of business rates arising this year or next year, rising as far as twenty-two point eight million by two thousand and twenty-seven, which could make a huge difference to our budget position over that period. But obviously, it's this business about ensuring that we're keeping an eye on it and making sure that we are securing our fifty per cent, which is, I believe, what we're entitled to both on Wilton and on the Tees Works site. So we said we were going to recruit or appoint an officer who was responsible for that, and I'd just like to know whether or not that's happened, please, and if we are making sure that we are maximising our take or going to be doing everything we can to maximise our take.
Your question is yes, I think you're quite right to be concerned about this. It is a welcome development, and obviously it will contribute towards the finances of the borough, but of course it's jam tomorrow at the moment, isn't it? On the issue of an officer, I'm quite sure that that is in train and will be taking place. We've got to make sure that we do get the appropriate amount of money. I think it's forty-nine per cent that the council gets, but it's not enough anyway, is it?
Thank you. Thank you councillor Nightingale for your report and councillors for your questions. So moving on, agenda item nine is to consider reports, and we have one report, and that is the report of the Governance Director and Monitoring Officer on the review of proportionality and distribution of seats. Andrew, would you like to present this, please?
Yes, I don't intend to go through it, it's just the standard technical report, which is just proportionality, there's been one amendment, the figures should have been circulated. I'm not aware there are any issues, so if we could move past that, it'll need a proposal and a second, please.
Do I have a proposal, please?
Madam Usma, thank you.
Thank you councillor Anigan. Secondaire councillor King, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on this report? If not, can I have general agreement that we move the report and pass it? Okay, general agreement, thank you. So moving on to our next item, which is a motion, and we have one motion today, proposed by councillor King. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, the motion is in everybody's papers, but I'll briefly run through it. There's also a lot of information in the government's Department for Leveling Up Housing and Communities paper from September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, which gives a great deal of evidence of the benefits of this project in helping the most vulnerable in society. It's a wraparound system that allows people with vulnerabilities housing first, as it says, because in the past, people haven't been able to get houses because they haven't got jobs, and they haven't been able to get jobs because they haven't got houses, and this brings a lot of groups together. Homelessness is really complex, and it's often caused by other issues such as mental health problems, drug and alcohol addiction, family breakdown, and housing first has a proven track record of helping people. It's nationally and internationally proven approach, helps people maintain tenancies because the difference between the tenancy and the help that people receive is separated, and they're not dependent upon each other. It's good value for money, as it's been proven, to make savings in the long term, and so I'm going to submit the motion that this council believes that access to good quality housing is a human right and offers people a chance to engage with support for multiple and complex needs, that thirty years of evidence demonstrates how the provision of well-managed houses for people with multiple and complex needs increases their engagement with support services compared to making housing dependent on existing engagement with such services, and that this council resolves to ask the cabinet member for neighbourhoods and housing to instruct officers to identify the scale of need for housing first for people with complex needs and multiple needs in Redcar and Cleveland Borough, to encourage officers to seek advice and support from national and local partners in adopting the housing-first model of support for people with multiple and complex needs, with the aim of ensuring that services provide fidelity to the seven housing-first principles as published in the homeless link, to invite the cabinet member for neighbourhoods and housing to report back to the council on whether and how this authority intends to seek and use funding available from the Rough Sleeping Initiative two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-five, and to write to local MPs and the Secretary of State to ask for additional funding to support local authorities in delivering a joined-up policy increasing housing-first provision. And just a side note, the seven principles spoken about are that people have the right to a home, flexible support is provided for as long as it's needed, housing and support are separate issues, people have choice and control of their own lives, an active engagement approach is used. Can't read me on writing. The service is varied in people's strengths, goals and aspirations, so it's about improving people's self-esteem and self-belief in themselves so that they can help themselves and help them integrate back into community, and a harm reduction approach is used. It's supported by many charities, the crisis and the homeless link, if anybody wants more information. I'd like to submit this motion to the council, thank you.
Thank you councillor King. Do I have a secondaire? Councillor Barnes, okay, I'll take that, your secondaire.
Yeah, could I... What I've just said?
Uh, yeah.
Just support the motion.
Yes, if you wish to speak now.
As the motion states, housing first has a robust body of evidence, and various studies suggest that it saves public services money in the long run. So you might ask, why is it already happening in sufficient volume here and elsewhere in the UK? Well, the upfront costs of housing first can be hard to meet because the savings are hidden across lots of different budgets in the long term, but the savings are definitely there. However, it is the role of councillors to help, offer political leadership, and to ask government to do the same, in helping people to turn around their lives. Our communities will all benefit from a reduced demand in emergency services and council services if we can deliver a joined-up approach. Housing first has a high success rate in helping homeless people with multiple and complex needs. It will only ever be part of a range of tools to tackle homelessness, but it is one where our council should be leading the way in identifying and securing funding to meet the full extent of those needs. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barnes. councillor Hunt?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just for the, I won't say too much about it, but the answers to the four questions at the bottom is basically, yes, we will quantify. Question two, we're already doing a lot of work, the officers are doing a lot of work into this as it is, not housing first, but same principle. Question three, we'll prepare a report and bring it to scrutiny and bring it into the next report to full council, so that will be talked about. And yes, we will write to the MPs and to the Secretary of State. And as a passion for homelessness and for mental health and such, and the Broughton Ward councillors are working a lot with mental health in our area up at the Broughton area and East Cleveland, how could I not support this motion? So I will be supporting this motion, and I'll try to do everything that's asked in the report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hunt. councillor Kay?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. You know, I'm sure we can all support this motion, and I hope we will do, but I think it goes beyond homelessness, it goes to the very fabric of the housing that we have, not only in Redcar and Cleveland, but throughout the land, particularly in areas of former industry and urban areas, where, you know, you just have to drive around this area and you'll see what a shocking state some of our houses are in. So we're not just talking about people who haven't got a home, we should also be talking about people who live in a rundown home. I've had a report this week about a particular property, a social housing property, which is in an absolute scandalous state of repair. And it's not only repairs, it's the original fabric of properties as well. When I go abroad in Europe, I'm a Brexiteer by the way, but the, I must admit, in some parts of Europe, particularly France and Germany, the general standard of housing is much better, better insulated, more spacious, better heated than it is here. Now, there are lovely houses in our area, such as at Swan's Corner, I admire those when I drive past. They build them a bit close together, mind you, but if you're going to have a five-bedroom house, I think you should have a five-bedroom garden as well, but that's in contrast. Somebody was on about the council tax earlier. You know, yes, you pay far more in proportion related to the quality of your house quite often when you're in a council tax bound, which is perhaps quite low. So I don't know, and I'm just having a moan here really, because it's a national problem, and, you know, we can only tinker with it, but certainly, you know, the homeless, people who are actually homeless should be top of the list, but let's build some properties that are fit, as Lloyd George said, fit for heroes to live in.
Thank you councillor Kay. councillor Ovens?
Yeah, it's all right, the lights come on now, thank you. I appreciate what's already being done, as councillor Hunt mentioned, in anything that can increase the work that's being done with existing services in protecting some of our most vulnerable people. And I think it's quite rightly that it's not just homeless people, it's people, as councillor Kay mentioned, who are perhaps not in the appropriate housing. I know of a significant number of people I'm working with who are just not best placed in the housing that they have by their current social provider, so I'll be very supportive of it, and if it does, as in point four, if we do get any extra help from any agencies, MPs or whatever, then the more we can get to promote this, the better. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ovens. councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to carry on a little bit from councillor Kay's comments, we absolutely should be all supporting this, and councillor Hunt says we already do a lot to avoid homelessness on the High Street, and wherever you ring the council, they're really good. However, the government just brought in new legislation about, round about damp and mould after the death of the two-year-old child, and I thank the government, Conservative government, for that. And I put a post on social media, and just off the back of that, in the last two days, I've had eight residents who were in social housing in my own ward send me pictures of houses that I wouldn't fit to have a dog in, never mind children. So I hope we go a lot further than just this and look at the social housing we're already providing to people across the borough. And again, I know it's not the council, but social housing providers, so I would hope that any new administration really does sort of carry on this work and look at the quality of what people are having to live in. I was shocked that the lightning out of damp and mould that some people are having to endure on a daily basis, so thank you for your comments, councillor Kay.
Thank you councillor Brown. councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Hopefully, everybody in the chamber is really understanding of the importance that housing plays in all of our communities, and that was reflected, was it not, in the establishment of the Housing Forum, which meets twice a year, to look at in detail what the local authority is doing, what its housing officers are doing, what the portfolio holder is recommending, and councillor Hunt's already indicated that some of this work has already been undertaken. So I do think that in addition to this forum, members could well take advantage of attending the Housing Forum, the next one. For those who are not aware and do not have it in the diaries, it's on Monday, the thirteenth of March, at three o'clock. And without being disrespectful, neither the proposer nor the secondaire are going to be there. I hope they are now going to be there, because there will be a presentation in terms of what this programme attempts to deliver, both nationally and hopefully we can deliver locally. So that debate will go on, not just after today.
Thank you councillor Thompson. councillor Watts?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do agree with councillor Steve Kay, which is unusual, but I do think I support this motion, but I do think we need to look wider, because the government schemes which have run for the last few years, looking at wall insulation, alternative forms of heating, actually finished this March. There may be another scheme, but the funding as it is finishes in March, and we have an awful lot of homes which are totally not sustainable, and residents who can't even afford to heat, homes with holes in the wall and no proper heating.
Thank you councillor Watts. councillor Glynn Nightingale?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to support this motion, I want to congratulate councillor King and councillor Barnes on their willingness to bring this forward to the council and on their deep concern about the issue. I think for too long, housing development, right across the country and across, especially across Tees Valley, has been related more to increasing council tax revenues than representing need and helping first-time buyers. And I just want to pick up on the point that councillor Kay mentioned about social housing organisations in our area. What he was talking about was a case I sent to him of someone in our ward, and the conditions for the premises that Beyond Housing were responsible for were absolutely horrendous, absolutely appalling, and I've got to thank councillor Kay for his willingness to raise the issue with the Beyond Housing hierarchy tomorrow. I think the motion is necessary, but it's not sufficient unless we have a proper response from the government and from social housing organisations. But it is a major step forward, and I hope it will be passed.
We have no more speakers. councillor King, would you like to sum up, please?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the cabinet member for his support on this motion and taking everything forward, and everybody that's spoken in support of this motion. It obviously affects a lot of people, as you know myself and others, and they're heavily involved with the care leavers, who are high proportion falling to homelessness through no fault of their own once they turn post eighteen or twenty-one. Ex-armed forces, members have a high prevalence of homelessness when they're leaving, so it's a huge support. I'd like to thank councillor Thompson for reminding... I'd like to thank councillor Thompson for reminding us of the Housing Forum. I'll probably be at work, but I will try if I'm not at work. And I'd, I'd like to ask some questions outside this, you can probably answer it later, because it's not a question-and-answer session. Do the local housing providers, social housing providers actually turn up at that meeting and listen to what's being said? And I'd like to thank everybody. But if anyone's needing more information, have a look at the Crisis website, there's a wealth of information on there about how this goes on to support people. And thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Councillors, you've heard the motion and the debate. Can I have a show of hands, all in favour, please? And then that is carried. Thank you. Thank you, councillor King, for your motion. Item ten is to appoint members. The following changes have been received and circulated. Can this be agreed? I'll read them out. Regulatory Committee, councillor Jeffrey to replace councillor Richardson. Councillor Clark to replace councillor Ayer. Governance Committee, councillor Ayer to fill the vacant position. Tees Valley Combined Authority of View and Scrutiny Committee, councillor Watts to fill the vacant position. We are, however, waiting for a nomination for a substitute for this committee from the ungrouped independents. Do we have any volunteers for that? Okay, so that position is still vacant. Do we have general, oh, sorry. Growth, scrutiny and improvement committee, councillor Clark to remain on the committee as the Labour member. So can I have general agreement in relation to those new positions, please? Okay, thank you very much indeed. Item agenda eleven is questions from members of the council, and we have six questions have been received. Question one is from councillor Vince Smith to councillor Lanigan, leader of the council. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The, this, this question's like, just to put a little bit of basis behind it, this is only, we only had like a relatively small amount of public realm funding remaining when, for the Teesville Ward, when I and my fellow councillors were elected in 2019. The final balance on this is proposed to be spent on a Teesville Arts of feature, Art Sign feature. This is a similar way that public realm funding is being used elsewhere in the borough. The planning application is currently a weight decision on that. And I asked this question in answer to a former councillor, Bob Norton, who opposed the feature, and I therefore agree to ask this question.
Councillor Smith, I have been quite strict with councillors in the past in relation to the question and answers, and it would be unfair for me to probably give you a bit of leeway. Basically, the first question, it should be the question that you're at, that is in front of us, then you will be given the opportunity to make any supplementary.
Yeah, that was just an introduction.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So with no further rounds of public realm funding being proposed, I seek clarification as to whether any unspent funding remaining in each ward will be rolled over into the next financial year and retained solely for use in the relevant wards? Or will it be reallocated into the capital programme? Right, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith, for your question. It's the intention that public realm will cease at the end of this financial year. Any contractual commitments in place before the year will be honoured. But any unspent and uncommitted balances will not roll over into the next financial year. Therefore, any planned schemes should be progressed before the end of March. The current round of public realm is funded by council borrowing. Therefore, any unspent balances will not be relocated into, will not be relocated into the capital programme. Rather, we will reduce the amount of borrowing required to be taken thereby, helping to mitigate the rising cost of borrowing. So I'm afraid, councillor Smith, that if you've got something in progress, that would be absolutely honoured, but it will not be taken forward into the next financial year.
Councillor Smith, do you have a supplementary question?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, councillor Lanigan, for that reply. As I say, if we, if the planning permission is through on our heart sign, our money would be spent, although what any other wards have left over and things how they feel about it not being carried over. But as I say, ours, ours will be taken care of if this planning application is approved. Right, thank you.
Councillor Lanigan, do you want to reply?
That's, that's fine, councillor Smith, but you can understand with, with this not actually going forward to the next financial year, it's not possible, I'm quite sure, that you've got your project in hand. But if you don't, if you don't use it, I'm afraid you're going to lose it. And it will come back in to see if we can get down the borrowing costs that we've got with the council, because it was borrowed money in order that we did that. So that's for all the councillors here. To get your schemes in and forwarded, that doesn't mean say it's on the ground, but you've got to have that process in place. Now, it's been difficult with Covid, and sometimes some of these schemes have been delayed, but it will not be going forward to the next financial year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith, for your question. Question two is from councillor Watts to councillor Gallagher, cabinet member for economic growth. Councillor Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Gisborough Town Hall was bought by this council, but a group was set up in Gisborough to prepare a plan for the building and apply for lottery funding to complete the work, in addition to funding from the Combined Authority and Redcar Borough Council. It is now completed, and there are three leases set up in the building. One is the gin bar, two, the accommodation, and three, a community interest group which is responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of the building. Can the cabinet member please explain to members how the CIG raises funds to do their job? Two, how the CIG able, how was the CIG able to sponsor another project in Gisborough, the Opera Nova, on its first return to Gisborough after Covid last year? Three, does the money from the other two leases go to the CIG or to Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council?
Thank you, councillor Watts. Councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll answer these in, in the three-question formats. The council only has involvement with the CIG solely relating to the role it plays as landlord to the, to their occupancy in the building, so a landlord-tenant arrangement only. Any information regarding how the CIG raised funding to undertake their duties is not known by the council acting as the landlord. It would be up to the CIG to provide any relevant information should they desire to do so. Question two. As with the answer to question one, the council merely acts as the landlord, therefore it would be up to the CIG to provide any relevant information as to how funding sponsorship is utilised, should they desire to do so. And the third element, the council is the landlord of the Gisborough Town Hall, and any lease or licence arrangements are paid to the council.
Thank you. Councillor Watts, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you very much. I ask these questions because an awful lot of time, many years of time and money was put into restoring this building. The landlord that you refer to is Redcar Cleveland Borough Council. Now, what we would hate to see is now that it's up and running, a mismanagement that means we have no money to address the ongoing maintenance. The project initially started to encourage visitors with bikes to come into Gisborough. There's a huge bicycle store. What we've ended up with is a sort of party place where all seventeen beds have to be booked for a party. Now, we don't want to waste this building, and we're looking to the landlords, Redcar Cleveland Council, to get this sorted out.
Councillor Gallagher.
I refer to mismanagement, I'm not aware of any mismanagement. The operation of the lease is up to and includes cooperation with the council. As long as the tenant is operating within the leasing terms, there is no mismanagement as far as we're concerned. It may not be the original perception or your perception of, of the use of the building, but it's the perception and the use of the leaseholder who has custody of the building and how they operate that building. As long as it doesn't conflict with that lease, then the council are relatively happy that the operation of that property is in accordance with the lease.
Thank you.
If I actually would disagree with that, not just hearsay, but information that says that it's not being operated in a proper way in accordance with the lease, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three is again from councillor Watts to councillor Glynn Nightingale, cabinet member for corporate resources. Councillor Watts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. How often is the procurement list reviewed in relation to locality and value for money?
Councillor Nightingale.
Given that question, it is a continual process and doesn't need to be reviewed at set intervals. That's not how it works. Staff need, when they need to procure goods and services, follow the council's contractual contract procedure rules. These govern how goods, services and works are procured and how value for money is achieved through contracts. The rules have three main purposes. To comply with the obligations governing the spending of public money. Secondly, to achieve value for money in the way the council spends money and delivers its corporate priorities. And three, to protect council officers who follow the rules. As part of the procurement process, the officer responsible for each registered contract, the contract owner is required to consider the locality of supply and obtain value for money. Contract procedure rules allow for a closed quotation process with a minimum of three local suppliers being invited to bid. A local supplier is defined as, and I quote, "a supplier located in the borough of Redcar and Cleveland", or, "if an appropriate supplier cannot be located within Redcar and Cleveland", then "a supplier located in the Tees Valley". When, when the contract is awarded, the contract owner is responsible for continually monitoring and managing the contract and ensuring value for money. Contract review reports are sent to contract owners on a quarterly basis. If the contract has an optional extension period available, value for money and other, and availability of alternative supplies is considered as part of the decision to extend the contract, re-procure or look for other alternatives. If the goods, services or works are still required, I hope then that this helps councillor Watts' understanding of the very thorough procurement process of the council. I can supply a table that shows the process for each procurement threshold value for councillor Watts, if she wishes to have this.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. Councillor Watts, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I ask this question because in the eight years, nearly eight years I've been on the council, time and time again, I go to the procurement list, or I go to the neighbourhood officer who approaches the procurement list, and I find they are more expensive than local contractors. I have been told, though, I can add names to that list, which I've regularly had to do. This was why I asked about who reviews the list.
I don't think there was a question there, councillor Nightingale, but if you wished to make any comment. Okay, thank you, councillor Watts. Question four is from councillor Richardson to councillor Gallagher, cabinet member for economic growth. Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll take the question as read. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Gallagher.
Thank you for that, Mr Mayor. Aside benefits from planning permissions spread over three planning applications determined through 2011 through to 2013, the planning permissions which established the 288 dwellings and the estate layout was R2012, 0829, FFM, determined on the 7th and 2nd, 2013. As customary with most cases, the applicant and the application and permission do not include details regard to road markings and/or bins, as this is dealt with through separate mechanisms. The house builder has since implemented the planning permissions. Outside of the planning process, the appropriate time during or post-completion of the development, the council can formally adopt public highway, depending on the arrangement and agreement with the developer. This is issue, this issue has now essentially moved out of the planning sphere and into the highways area of the council. I confirm that the council highways officers are liaising with the developer to undertake the outstanding remedial measures in order to adopt. These are ongoing. I can, I can further confirm that the council unadopted highways inspector is actively on-site inspecting the works at this moment. I'm informed that we aren't far away from adoption, with just some minor issues still to be put right before the council can be satisfied. After checking with the officers, they are not aware of duplicate street lighting columns to be removed or, nor streetlights not working. If councillor Richardson could provide the column identification numbers for the ones not working, then I will pass that on to the officers who will instruct Keep Most to subsequently repair. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary?
Supplementary, thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, they don't have column identification numbers because they haven't been adopted by the council, therefore they are just streetlights. When I'm asked to submit photos, I submit photos of not working streetlights. Remedial work's been going on for at least eight years, and I'm asking what the council is doing to push that forward. I've been told for three years that we're taking legal action. I think we're not. And I'd like to ask what's going to be done in future? How are we going to stop builders abusing the system and doing this again and again? There's currently eleven streetlights not working on my estate, there's only about ten streets. When this is passed for testing, in that it works in that day, boy, just sign it off, we are going to have to invest a lot of money to put right this whole system that doesn't work. So how are we going to prevent that in future? Thank you.
Councillor Gallagher.
Yeah, clearly, most of the questions you have are probably more related to highways, but I will pass them on to the inspector to deal with those, clearly, without column numbers, very difficult to identify them, and I agree with you. And it does seem an awful long time that this has dragged on. Unfortunately, this is the problem, and these are the gaps within the planning system, and the developers abuse these, use these to their advantage, because clearly, once we take an adoption action, they have a payment to make. Clearly, they want to hold on to that money for as long as they can, so therefore they will delay. But we will try and instigate some sort of action. We're led to believe that we're close. We were close six months ago when I told you the same story, unfortunately. I do apologise for that. But we hopefully are closer now, and we'll get some definitive answers and press them to the best of our ability. But we are in this legal sort of minefield of we can, we can't sort of situation. But hopefully, they'll be happier to move on. But your point about the serviceability of these lamp posts, et cetera, needs to be addressed, and I'm sure that councillor Foggo will have made a note of that and ensure that we take over fit and proper and serviceable street lighting that we don't have to spend any additional monies on. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Question five again is from councillor Richardson, and originally it was to councillor Lanigan, but I understand it that councillor Foggo will be answering your question. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, I'll take it as read.
Councillor Foggo.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In response to the first part, will the council commit to funding creates some enclosed and secured dog parks, exercise areas? The council will commit to scoping the feasibility of such a scheme. And in response to the received request for an area of the beach to be included in dogs-on-leash requirements, the council recognises the dogs by, the control of dogs by dog walkers in public spaces as an emerging issue in the last few years, and this requires a robust enforcement and response, in common with that taken by many other local authorities across England and Wales. Reports of persons allowing their dogs to be dangerously out of control in public place, injuring any person, have increased 27.3% during the last four years from... injuring any person, have increased 27.3% during the last four years from first April 2018 to 31st January 2019 versus first April 2020 to 31st January 2023. Council's starting point when exercising the powers is under the Anti-Social Behaviour Crime and Policing Act. Public spaces protection order provisions is to seek to ensure everyone can use and enjoy public spaces safe from antisocial behaviour. That's why the council, when it viewed its Dogs Public Spaces Protection Order record in Cleveland last year, having secured public support to do so, the council renewed the order for another three years and introduced new dog control powers, including a leads-by-order direction provision, which will have a borough-wide effect and targeted dogs-on-leads requirements for some formal parks and gardens in the borough, including Lock Park. Consultation exercised by gathering information concerning people's experience of these issues has also added considerably to the evidence base justifying the council in introducing these new provisions. The council is committed to exploring all legislative options, including by exercising PSPO powers to address antisocial behaviour, including activities related to dogs in public spaces. The council will continue to monitor the effectiveness of these new provisions in tackling dog-related antisocial behaviour, including dog fouling and dogs being dangerously out of control. However, our approach remains a cautious one, taking an evidence-based approach, applying the legal prescribed tests, striking an appropriate balance between the need to tackle dog fouling and under control, uncontrolled dogs, against the desire and entitlement of members of the public to use a public space, taking care to test public support for any new provisions and monitoring the effectiveness of the provisions. As you said in your question, the officer that looks after the PSPOs is actually investigating the possibility of doing a section on the beach.
Thank you, councillor Foggo. Councillor Richardson, have you got a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Mr Mayor. As you are investigating the feasibility of a dog park, I'd like to propose the old Sacred Heart Fields as it's not designated for building on, and it's close to Lock Park. The businesses in Lock Park have suffered as a result of the dogs-on-leads regulation, because a lot of people just aren't using it anymore, they're going somewhere else. So having such a dog park close by would benefit them as well. You know, we do have a huge problem, our rescue is full, dog fouling's on the increase, and as you said, we've got attacks on the increase as well. So this would be something proactive, very cheap, and also rentable. So we've got a lot of trainers in the area that don't have an outdoor space that they can rent to conduct socialisation training, which was not possible during Covid. So would you please take those factors into consideration when doing your survey? Thank you.
Councillor Foggo.
Obviously, we'll take into consideration any factors that will be affecting the operation of any areas that are designated. The only thing I will say is that I understand that Middlesbrough council actually had two areas, one in Stewart Park and one in just off Dixon Bank, which they then closed down. And we'll look at that to see why they involved, they actually shut them down. There are lots of issues that we have to look at when we look at the feasibility of introducing it. So yes, we will look at all issues as well as the, how we enforce these areas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Richardson, for your questions. Question six is our final question, that's from councillor Massey to councillor Gallagher, cabinet member for economic growth. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a short question, I'm going to take the liberty to read it out. I've previously asked many questions to yourself, councillor Gallagher, to your predecessor, councillor Davies, and to the leader of the council, councillor Lanigan, about the redevelopment of Eston Precinct. Given central government's recent refusal of the council's levelling up bid, which covered this area, what are the council's plans now for Eston Precinct?
Councillor Gallagher.
So it is obviously very disappointing that the government did not support the levelling up fund bid for the Great Reston area, including proposal for the redevelopment of Eston Precinct. As a levelling up fund is now not on the table, sufficient funding to deliver the Luff envisaged project is not available. The council is actively exploring other external funding opportunities to subsidise the project costs, and these will be progressed over the coming months. As Aline has already alluded to, promises were made during her visit to London, but unfortunately they weren't worth the paper they weren't written on. This is not unusual, as we can probably all understand, we know the nature of politics and the business undertaken by those individuals. In terms of the future project scope, it's important to consider a future funding package which is financially sustainable and crucially deliverable on the ground, which is tailored to meet the needs of the local businesses. It is anticipated that these discussions with external funding partners will continue beyond May 2023. Therefore, the funding landscape and the project scope will be reconsidered in the new financial and municipal years. We are still looking at what we could possibly do, but as everybody understands, without the money to do it, it's very, very difficult. But we haven't given up, if that's the term to use. We are still striving to achieve something. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Massey, do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, no, I thank councillor Gallagher and the leader of the council for trying, in essence, with the government, but as it seems that we're not going to get anywhere with central government for Eston, my question or supplementary question is, when I last asked this question on the 13th of March 2022, I read the Gazette article earlier, the cabinet member at the time said, it is the intention of this council to commit to Eston Precinct. So I ask, will the cabinet member consider committing the £5 million previously in the budget, taken out by this cabinet, back into the next budget and commit the £5 million back into Weston Square?
Thank you, councillor Massey. Councillor Gallagher.
I haven't checked my lottery ticket, so I can't make any commitment at the moment yet. If it's coming, then you should be okay. We are committed to the project, the problem is finding the resources to do it. Yep, we all understand the situation we find ourselves in, and we're somewhat better off than some of the councils in the south of England, who are somewhat worse off, owing an awful lot of money. So we are being careful in what we're doing, and we're trying to deliver the more important projects that we have to deliver for the better people will enjoy, one of those being the swimming pool renewal in Eston, or precisely in South Bank.
Thank you. And that's the end of our questionings from councillors, and that's the end of our items for today's Borough Council. Thank you, councillors, for your attendance, and thank you for your contribution, and remember those mayor achievement awards, please.